Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and ask the court to call roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Proton Marshburn?
Present.
Councilmember Behrger?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Johns will be absent this evening.
Mayor Proton, Ken Marshburn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invitation. Please rise.
Please join me if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
You may be seated. Marshburn?
Mr. Behr and fellow councilmembers, it's my privilege this evening to have to come lead us in our invitation, Mr. Jeffrey Robinson. Mr. Robinson is the Dean and CCO, Public Safety Education Division at Wake Tech Community College, known by many from his job there. But he is also pastor of the Juniper, is it Baptist Church?
Level.
Yes. So Pastor Robinson, if you would come and lead us, we'd appreciate that very much.
Thank you for having us. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this awesome time. We thank you for the development and all that you've done here for the town of Garner. We thank you for the increase because your word says, "One plant, another waters," but you give the increase. We pray for wisdom, for knowledge, and for understanding. We pray for this season because you are the reason for this season.
Amen.
We pray that you would have your way in all that we do, that you would get the glory. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The National Department of Petitions and Comments.
That is time on the agenda for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the council, come to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing now will move forward. Adoption of the agenda.
Was there gonna be a closed session for anything, Rodney?
Yes, there will be to discuss property acquisition.
And I'd like to add one for prospective litigation.
Okay, Rodney, without the agenda, were you gonna include those two?
So with those additions, a closed session as an added item, I will move approval of the agenda as it's presented otherwise.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, vote by say and aye.
Aye.
All opposed. No presentations? Consent? Anyone want to put anything?
A little consent agenda as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, vote by say and aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearings. No public hearings, new and old business. Historic Depot Resolution, Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have an item here referring to the Historic Depot Resolution back in October, on October 16th, the Garner Area Historical Society, which several members are present here today, presented a plan for preserving Garner's history and for the move of the Garner Historic Depot from its current location to a lot on Pearl Street. And there was a lot of discussion about how that would serve as a museum and kind of a base for Garner's future, like I said, preservation of history and display and education, and how that would be incorporated with eventually the Pearl Street building and possible expansion at a later time. But anyway, during that discussion, there was talk of the town partnering with the Garner Area Historical Society to, for them to, I guess, run the facility and to have fundraisers and provide funds for the continuous operation if the town would be willing to move the building and whatever parking and restroom facility would need to go with that. And it was determined that the facility could be placed in such a manner that the Pearl Street building could provide parking and restrooms. So with that, council asked that we, you know, continue to have discussions and look at and refine what the cost would be to refurbish the building and get it in a state where it could be moved, for one thing. At the time, the repairs had not been made to the building as a result of the automobile crash, but they have since been made. But there would be other requirements if the building is moved and when the building is moved, as far as foundation and, you know, ramps and those type of things. But nonetheless, this resolution states that the town is supportive of moving the building, the Historic Depot, and then it also states that the town would be in favor of partnering with the Garner Area Historical Society. And it says in principle, there was some discussion about their support for doing this, but wanted to have the costs known before making, I guess, a 100% commitment. And that's pretty much where we stand right now. And just waiting for any comment you might have pertaining to the language of the resolution and...
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, I recognize the Historical Society members who are here this evening. Thank you for attending. As noted previously, I'd like to see this council do all we can to make this happen. This resolution we have before us, I believe, is a good working document to get us moving on the road. Certainly, one issue that I'm sure we don't know yet is the cost, which could be substantial. But I have, I had two or three questions that I wanted to just ask to see if anybody has any thoughts on this, and then maybe some members of this society could answer some of these. And I'm not sure these are the most crucial, but at any rate, has it been decided who at the town would be what I would call the point person in working with the Historical Society on this project? Which seems to me that if we don't, we maybe ought to designate someone to do that.
That has been me.
Okay.
I've already met with the group once and had discussions. And, well, I'll just give you an update. We met as a group and we went through what some of their desires were for the depot and when it's moved and what type of amenities it might have. And so got a list of that, and then staff met and we went through that list and, you know, one by one, and talked about how we could accommodate some of those things and how some of them may be more difficult to accommodate. But I think the Garner Area Historical Society recognized that some of the items that they asked for were, they would like to have, but may not be absolutely necessary. Their main goal is to get the building moved and get it operational, and then there might be some things that we can do in a later phase that may not happen because we want to try to expedite the move. And then, so from that discussion with staff, we're developing a site plan. We hope to have it, you know, by the end of this week. Planning is gonna draw up a site plan, and then we're gonna meet with the group again and go through all of the different items that they mentioned, one by one, and then also show them the proposed site plan of how the building would be situated on the Pearl Street and what other things might go with that as far as any plantings and sidewalks and parking, you know, how far the parking has to be from the building and that type of thing. And just to go through all the regulations, so it's all out on the table and everybody's on the same page. And then from that, we will take that and develop a cost estimate and then bring that back.
Okay, so that was, thank you, a very thorough answer to who's gonna be the point person. I assume you're gonna continue, expect to do that. The other que, and I may be getting into many details, so just, of course, I only have two more. I assume maybe somebody either on their side or you, Rodney, who's gonna be the coordinating this with the railroad? I mean, would it be a joint effort?
That's gonna be probably on the staff end. Mr. Hodges has had the most contact with the railroad staff, but that would be on our end, and we have talked to them, and they are agreeable to the depot and the caboose being moved out of the right of way. We don't have a definitive answer on what their contribution might be towards that, but we are, we're still in conversations with them. I think once we have more of a final plan, they'll be more willing to answer that question.
Okay. And then the final question I have, and I think I know the answer, I'm not sure, but anyway, obviously, we talked about costs, and at this point, we're not sure what those monies will be. I didn't remember if the Historical Society had any plans to do some fundraising as part of the process.
My discussions with them, and they can, I guess they can answer for themselves, my discussions with them, they do plan to have fundraisers. I think a key element to their fundraising was to have this resolution so they can show the public that they had council support and town support and use that for the basis of their fundraising. And then also, there were some funds that were set aside from the previous Garner History Group. I don't know what the exact name was then, but there are some funds that are still in the town coffers that could be used for their, the upstart and, you know, operation. Some upwards of about $11,000, from what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
But they do plan to fundraise.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. Just a point of information, the previous group was called the Friends of Historic Garner, and yes, there were funds that are still unspent and can be used for the project. I have some heartburn with a couple of terms in here. I want the resolution to be very clear that we do intend to move this, the depot, and item number one under therefore be it resolved, the last sentence says, "Subject to determination of cost and establishment of a budget for the project." I think the resolution needs to simply state, "We are committed to doing this. We don't have to have all the facts together before we pass a resolution. The resolution is simply a statement of intent. From there, we find out what the costs are and what's going to, an establishment of a budget and so forth and so on." But I, in my view, a resolution and then the process to get it done are two entirely different things, and I would like to see the subject to determination stricken from the resolution.
I'm gonna ask the attorney to maybe qualify that some.
No, I mean, the resolution is up to the will of the council. It's not really, not really a legal, legal issue.
Okay, move ahead, right? Okay, I want all the council members to be sure before they move ahead too, and then we'll see if anybody in August wants to say anything. You guys okay?
Yeah, I mean, to Kathy's point, I mean, to me, the resolution determines that the council is committed to this and that as part of the process, obviously, the cost of it will have to be determined, which we don't have yet. But I read the resolution as indicating that that will not be a, that will not be a factor that would cause us not to.
If I may just answer that. I may be overly cautious. I have been working along with some other citizens on this project for 25 years, and we have a potential in the next year to have a different makeup on the council. And I would not want to see a different makeup cause this project to be scrapped. And I would like the resolution to have the language strong enough in there that in a future council would understand that we meant to do that and it should be carried out.
Gray. Any comments?
Well, I want the subject to determination of cost establishment for the project to be left in. And we have a fiduciary responsibility. If you don't pass anything, that's in the budget. So we shouldn't just say we're gonna do it and it comes back in and it's three, four, five hundred thousand dollars, like, we don't have a budget line item in our budget for that. So how are we gonna, wanna take care of that?
We need that going in, Rodney.
It's just, I mean, it's just, we have a fiduciary responsibility for tax dollars and taxpayers, but you should at least have it in the resolution that the cost and establishment of a budget for the project are a concern, and that those concerns will probably be addressed. But you shouldn't just say we're gonna do it and we don't care how much it costs, because that's basically what you're saying. If you say you don't wanna care about the cost and establishment of a budget, we're gonna do it, we don't care how much it costs.
Gray, that is not what I said.
But you should leave that language in there. That's what our responsibility is.
I agree with you there, but don't put words in my mouth. I didn't say I didn't care what it costs.
Anything else, Gray?
I think that's fair.
The resolution is essentially the way that I made the motion, "Subject to determination of the cost and establishment of a budget." We need a plan and a budget, and I don't think that's gonna be a limiting factor, but it moves the project along at a quicker pace if we know that we've got to have a plan and a budget. Because if you don't, if it lingers, it'll slow down the project, just simply put. And Gray's right on the fiduciary responsibility, but this is, I don't think this is limiting for the project. I don't have, I resolved that in my own thinking, got the location. Rodney introduced another item tonight that I don't know whether it's gonna be in the plan or not when he starts talking about the caboose. That's, but for that very reason, you just can't keep adding things and then finally determine the budget after you finish the project. Let's move on, let's draw the plan, let's put, let's get the work done on the budget, and let everybody go to work.
Very good. I would agree with that. And to me, Ms. Behrger, I guess what you'd call the preamble to the wherethes is, I think pretty well lays out the commitment of the council to make this happen. And that's, you know, conservation, relocation, rehabilitation, future use of the Garner Depot. I think it pretty well spells it out. Unless somebody's gonna amend it, I will move that we approve this resolution that is before us.
Hold on that, Ken. Does anybody from the group want to make any comments? Not a public hearing, we're gonna let you speak. Hold your motion.
And I guess the comments that I'm gonna make are pretty redundant to an email that I've already sent out. I was the one that asked for this resolution to begin with, and I was asking for the resolution so that we could show, in our efforts of fundraising, so that we could show that we had the intent of the council to do this. I do agree that the wherethes show that intent, but when you get to the therefor's, if I was someone that was given, that was asked to give money to this project, I would go, hmm, it doesn't sound like there's a total commitment here, and this resolution doesn't. So I get the budget, I get that you need to know what you're diving into. If anybody gets that, I do. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are involved in this, and each time you get into one aspect of it, then you're gonna have another situation come up, you know, as in the siding, the caboose. I mean, there's, this is not a cut and dried action, and this is not a cut and dried project. And I agree with that. All I had asked for was a resolution of intent to say that the council is moving forward to make this happen. And you did that, but the disclaimer kinda concerns me a little as far as fundraising. All we can do at this point, we appreciate everything the council has done, all we can do at this point is to tell anybody, you know, that wants to donate, it's like, just give it, give it, give it a while, and we'll see what the budget is and see what the council's gonna do. But I will say, from my experience with working with the council, that the motion on October 16th said just that, we are going to relocate the depot and we're gonna partner with the Garner Area Historical Society. That's what it said, and all I ever wanted from this was a resolution of intent that repeated your motion. That was it. I didn't, you know, didn't want any more above and beyond that. We do intend to fundraise, we do intend to operate a museum, and we do intend to live up to our part. So, anyway. With that said, we appreciate all the time you've given. I just wanted everybody to understand where I was coming from in the beginning in asking for this resolution. I wasn't asking for budget ordinance, I wasn't asking, you know, for any of that, just to say, okay, we as a council and, well, not even in concept, we as a council have agreed to do this. And stop it there. Anybody have any questions?
So in speaking for yourself and for the Historical Society, does, is it your contention that this resolution meets the, both the satisfaction requirements of what you're, what you were asking for?
I think all of the wherethes do. I think that when you get to Garner approves in principle, that the process be started, and there's a lot of disclaimers in the wherethes, that that would be cause for concern if I was wanting to give a large donation to this organization. Because reading those, it's like, hmm, you know, are they or aren't they? I can't argue that point. I can't say if I were you, I wouldn't want to have this in here. Because, you know, there is the unknown. It would be nice if we can go ahead and move forward, you know, with getting the cost estimates and the commitment from the railroad. Now, I know more than three years ago, there was a commitment from the railroad with a monetary amount attached to it. So at that, at that time, they were, but, you know, we've not gotten any commitment on how much they're gonna pay. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I can't, you know, I can't argue the cost of the site plan and this and that. All I can say is, we would have loved to have had the resolution that didn't have all the disclaimers, still wouldn't hold you, you know, any tighter than it is now. But with this resolution adopted as it is, we just hope that the town can move forward as quickly as we can and get the cost in and get the final commitment, and then we can start our fundraising.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy Boe. Go ahead. Okay, any other council got any comments?
Yeah, one thing I'll mention, and biggest concern on the cost is on these bond projects we've done. We have been so woefully prepared on several projects. They've outshot the budget of what we sold to the public of the budget. Police station, this is, went to half bad town hall, rec center, the greenway, we said it's gonna be $750,000. The cost estimates are four and a half to 6.8 million dollars, just a tad off. We've had sidewalk projects, this project, that project, where we thought going in, we had a reasonable expectation of a cost, that was way off. And that's what the concern is. I mean, we've already got, staff's already got a list of things to do to the police station, which is less than two years old, that already need to be done to it, if we have any monies left over after it's closed out. This town also not pretty good, rec center, God knows whenever we get into that, we'll have the depot moving before we get in that thing. That's just the concern. Again, we had several projects, numerous other bond projects. Some of them, we increased the scope of it, but other ones, just the budget, we've told, we thought it's gonna be an expectation here, and it's way over here, and that's the concern. We can't do that, we have to be careful with that or any other future large project. That's the concern about the money. We just don't know. And we've gotten burned enough, we just have to be careful. That's the concern.
Any other motion ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Parring any amendments, I move that this council adopt Resolution 218. Does it have an assigned number? I don't have it on here. For the resolution as, as we have it before us?
2364.
2364?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, vote by say and aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same. General use rezoning, Z1804, 801,000 Maxwell Drive. Hett Patel, senior planner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hett Patel. I am here to present the general use rezoning for 800 Maxwell Drive and 1,000 Maxwell Drive. The applicant for this project is Roy Tripp. The owner is Twin Ship Development Company, NTHL, Inc. The location, as I mentioned, is 800 Maxwell Drive and 1,000 Maxwell Drive. The size of the tract is 2.77 acres. This came to you at the October 16th meeting as the public hearing, and it has since then been to Planning Commission at the November 13th meeting, and we're back today for action on this item. In regards to the zoning, so the purpose of the requested rezoning is to downzone from R9C-153 to R40 in order to build a detached accessory building that exceeds 50% of the size of the principal structure. The existing residential use on the property would continue. The applicant owns both parcels, both contiguous parcels on Maxwell Drive. 1,000 Maxwell Drive is the one that contains the residence, and 800 Maxwell Drive is vacant and undeveloped. So the lot with the resident is currently split zoned between R40 and R9C-153. The applicant wants to rezone 0.77 acre of that R9C-153 back to R40. The zoning of the vacant tract is all R9C-153, and a two acre portion of that would be rezoned to R40 and combined with the principal structure lot. Here is a aerial view of the site, and so that parcel right there is the parcel that has the residence and is currently zoned R40. This parcel right next to it is the R9C-153, and the orange outline would be what changes to R40. The adjacent zoning and land use, majority of the zoning along Maxwell Drive is R9, and that's from the recent Jamison development that was passed across the street as well as a future, previously approved R9C-153 conditional use zone. Some of the other zoning include office and institutional and service business. The rezonings in the area include rezonings from commercial retail to service business as well as from R40 to R9, and that was the one that I mentioned. The existing zoning classification, as I mentioned, is R9C-153, and the requested zoning classification is R40. The purpose, again, is to build a detached accessory building that exceeds 70%, exceeds 50% of the principal structure. And again, the existing presidential property, residential use of the property would continue. R40 uses are highlighted here, so all of these uses would be permissible on the rezoning. The site has water and sewer infrastructure along the frontage on Maxwell Drive as well as to the rear to the apartment complex. In regards to transportation, the site has 115 feet of road frontage on Maxwell Drive, which is a 22-foot wide NC DOT maintained facility within a 60-foot right of way. The road currently lacks curb and gutter, so the site is already developed as a single family home, and road improvements would not be required as part of this rezoning. However, if the site were developed in the future, road improvements would apply, including curb, gutter, and sidewalks. We do not anticipate any additional traffic impacts as a result of the rezoning. There are no 100-year flood planes as delineated by the FEMA flood insurance rate maps on the... the site. In regards to zoning plan consistency, the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan identifies this site as medium-density residential on the future land use map. Medium-density residential is a land use category for single-family, duplex, triplex, quadplex, town home style residences with a recommended, recommended density of between 2.5 to five dwelling units per acre. So, this request, which is to downzone from R9, which would be 4.84 units per acre, to R40, which is a 1.08 units per acre, the requested R40 zoning district is less than what is recommended by the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. So therefore, this would require a comp plan amendment, and it, it is not consistent with the comp plan. So, the comp plan amendment would have to change the rezoning, or the designation on the site from medium-density residential to low-density residential and bring it, which is anything less than 2.5 units per acre. So, the question for the committee is whether or not this is appropriate. There are several considerations to give. There are no plans to develop this site into a low-density, large-lot residential subdivision. This request is solely related to the desire of adding an accessory building that is larger than what is allowed in R9. There are seven single-family residences, residences along this area on both sides of Maxwell Drive that are all on large lots. So, the area currently is operating as a low-density residential intensity, and you can see the seven lots that I've identified. At the public hearing that was held on October 16th, there were no public comments concerning this rezoning. And based on the preceding statements, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning to Town Council, along with a simultaneous amendment to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, redesignation of the site from medium-density residential to low-density residential. So, in regards to staff recommendation, council motion, the staff recommends that Town Council find the rezoning inconsistent, which is option three on the motion works worksheet, with the comp plan, but find it reasonable based on the preceding statements or any of the other options that are listed in the motion worksheet, and recommend that the future land use designation be amended to low-density residential. And the motion worksheet that I mentioned is on page 24 of your packets. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is here.
Anyone have anything? Okay. Entertainer motion.
Well, the worksheet that we have doesn't work, because it's consistent and approve, or it's inconsistent and deny, but it's inconsistent and we want to approve.
There is option three.
That's the third option, Kenny.
It is? Okay. All right. Move, the Town Council find that the rezoning request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan because of the area zoning, however. Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval and to revise the Garner Comprehensive Development Plan. And we find it's, and we find that it is reasonable based on the preceding statements of Section 4, as well as other applicable, applicable items of the motion worksheet, and approve application Z1804.
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Tony Cho, propose suspension of the water sewer allocation policy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In your package, you have a memorandum briefly summarizing the Public Works Committee meeting that was held on November 20th. There was some discussion in that meeting regarding the town's water sewer allocation policy, and there were three items that came out of that, recommendations to bring before full council. The three recommendations were to suspend the water sewer allocation policy until March 1, 2021, receive annual reports from staff on the available water and sewer capacity utilizing City of Raleigh actual flow reports, and receive annual updates on the commercial residential tax base ratio. And then council members that are served on that committee are here if they wish to provide further information, but basically, the town is in a very good position regarding available water and sewer capacity, and after the discussions, felt that this was the proper way to move forward, and just, just see over the next three years, how this responds. Are there any questions you have for me regarding?
Tony, I, of course, I'm sure the committee could answer, but I respect their work and I'll certainly support it. I understand that, I don't know if this was initiated by some concerns from the development community, or was this sort of a dual?
Councilman, it was dual. We, we staff had been discussing this previously with a need to really have a discussion with council, and then we heard from the development community while we were kind of planning that discussion, just with their concerns that when you start dealing with some of the larger developments that we have, the way our policy was crafted, frankly, we were not expecting the numbers from a, from a annual basis that we were seeing. So, they came to, the development community came to us with their concerns. While there are always obviously to have crafted or dealt with those, we did have a fairly good detailed discussion with the committee, and given that we, the numbers, we're currently using 2.2 million gallons per day, and have in excess of 3.5 million gallons per day to utilize in new development, both commercial and residential. So, as you can see, we have adequate capacity there, so the concern is not as great. The other thing that I think is important to point out, too, is that we, one of the things that, reasons that this was crafted many years ago, was in looking to try and guide residential to commercial tax base. And staff thinks by next year's reporting period, we're probably going to be very close to a 50-50 commercial residential tax base. So, that's a very good thing.
Right. Yeah, I read that into it, and it seems like I heard you to get the number 2080 as being the ratio, and so we've done a good job of getting that more to 50-50.
Yes, there's, there's reserve capacity. And after a lot of discussion, trying to boil it down, why are we lifting the cap? The discussion we had had to do with the way it's restricted now for the limitations that we place on it, or not as much as restrictive as they were a few years back. So, we went from 450 units to 600 units per year. But we've been having in each of the discussions, particularly about these, these dense housing units, densely populated housing units, is the inability to, to get beyond, everybody wants to come in with the type 1 housing. And we can't legislate type 2 housing unless we just say, like we did before, it proved to be not, not, not the best thing to do to try to legislate it. But the essence I got out of the meeting was this, that if we raise the limit or take the limit off, we're much more likely to get more type 2 housing, and I'd love for that explanation to be brought out. But it will help us in the long run to get a higher quality product, because if they have a larger number of units that they can build in a particular facility or a particular subdivision, then they can get a broader range of housing costs. Whether that's, whether I'm, have interpreted that correctly or not, you'll have to clarify it, but I, and I was talking with somebody today about this very issue, and they were asking me, how is raising the limit or taking the cap going to increase the, or raise the level, raise the standard of the, of the, of the housing product that's on the market? And I was not able to give a good answer, and so I was hoping that this discussion tonight might help us out a little bit.
I will do the best I can to, to explain it within.
Be my guest.
That, that, going back to what was originally being done with the type 1, type 2 policy, that clearly, we were, we were trying to, to take a limited capacity issue, which we were much more constrained when this was first discussed, 10, probably even before back to 15 years ago. So, we clearly were writing things to try and show what the town considered to be desirable, and the policy was giving us guidance to share with the development community during that, during their processes coming to town. What we've, what we're seeing, councilman, is the, the product itself, type 1, type 2, really is, is kind of muddled. It's, it's a mixture, is what we're seeing. And, but the bottom line, I guess, good news, is that they're all, especially with, with respect to single-family detached housing, are far in excess of what we were originally searching for from a tax base ratio. So, we're seeing that, that, the, the, the tax base generated from a residential, single-family product was clearly becoming what the town wanted and what was attracted to us. But it was being driven by the market forces more so than, than the type 1, type 2 split, because they, the community was very reluctant to commit to something, but they, when they got into the construction aspects of it, they were yielding 90% of that product anyway.
90% of which product?
90% of what was being required in type 2, you're getting it, but they just were hesitant. They wanted to let the market determine that aspect, rather than being committed to in, in an upfront type thing, and I, and I think I'm expressing their concerns.
The amenities that were in type 2 are being built, the square foot isn't as big, because people, in many cases nowadays, aren't building homes as big. But while the amenities and the development standards are being built in those homes that aren't above 1800s, where they're hovering right around that number, which is what's selling in the market. Town is right, the market's driving it.
We are seeing it go over the 1800s, but, but land cost and all the other factors that go into it, labor costs, everything, you know, concrete, I'm sure you understand the, so all that's driving the price of these homes up. So, I, I guess from their point of view, they wanted to be sure they weren't pricing themselves out of a market. And again, they know that side of the business much better than I do. I mean, there's others here at the town that are much more in tune with it, but.
The tax ratio, I think it was currently 54, 46, or something like that?
Fifty...
Fifty-three, forty-seven.
It's about 52, 48, or 53, 47.
A couple meetings ago, I mentioned that, it was at that Public Works meeting, we learned that in, in the commercial is where the apartments are, they're not in single-family, because as Tony told us, in Wake County, the Triangle area, the single, the high square foot, square foot value of any property in Wake County is apartment buildings, which is.
The Canada, the commercial one.
Commercial, commercial, and the highest square foot property value of anything in Wake County in the Triangle area. And so that's pushing it toward the 52, but that's, that's what's driving the price up. So, the value of apartments is, is continuing to escalate, and that's, that's helping your, helps the tax base.
Well, go ahead.
Well, one of the things we discussed was, yes, suspend the water and sewer allocation policy for two years. The way the words are written in here, and I could be wrong on it, is to receive bi-annual reports, and that semi-annual report, twice a year?
Twice a year. When I was writing, I looked.
Semi-annual reports from staff, and then annual updates on the commercial to residential tax base. So, it's not like to, we can change the policy, but it's, it sounds, after you hear it about three or four times, it makes, begins to resonate that if we legislate and say X number has to be of a particular size, the, the development community is reluctant to say, that's what I'm going to do, and I'm going to stand behind and, and, and take, put myself at risk. But if you don't put it on there, I'll let the market drive it, which is what's going to happen in the first place. No matter what we say, the market's going to drive it. So, I'm willing to give it a try. It took a while of discussion that day.
Well, I would just say, yeah, I have great respect for the, for the committee and for our town engineers, so I certainly will, will vote to, to approve the recommendation.
Anyone else? I entertain a motion. Entertain a motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a?
Per the recommendations from the Public Works Committee to suspend the water and sewer allocation policy and set up the reporting schedule that has been outlined in the memo by the town engineer.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Very good. Committee of the Lords. Manager, Rodney.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have Garter info in front of you, so if you have any questions about that, let us know. Wanted to mention again that the employee recognition luncheon is Thursday, December 13th, at 10:30 at the GPAC. We'll have recognition for various, various reasons, and then also safety awards with that. But it'd be for employee accomplishments throughout the year, and then safety awards. Just a real quick summary or overview, you may have heard already that the Fairview Fire District has petitioned the legislature to create a separate fire district just for them, where they would, I guess, be self-supporting and provide their own fire service. That bill went through committee today, and from what I understand, it passed committee and will, I guess, move on to the legislature for a vote at some point. We're keeping an eye on it. It, not, I'm not 100% clear how it affects us exactly, but it could, you know, alter the fire district the way we know it now. It could have some implications on the, the funding model, and it could create, you know, an avenue for others to do the same thing, which is probably not what Wake County would want to see. So, how it affects us directly remains to be seen, but we are keeping an eye on it. But I don't think it will, in the long run, affect what we plan to do with Fire Station 5 and covering the Garner town limits, so, but we'll, we'll just keep you informed of what happens with that. Another thing we wanted to just follow up on, I know in the past, Ms. Behringer's asked about the paving on that stretch of mechanical. We really haven't had a lot of success in trying to get that, getting that fixed, but Mr. Jones, the Public Works Director, has a meeting with some Raleigh officials later this week, and he's going to address that with them, just to see if, you know, they would take some ownership of it. And then we're also going to get in contact with the utility who we think made the patch, and try to go that avenue. As of now, we've reported it several times and talked to several people, but no action's been done on it. So, we have a governmental liaison with AT&amp;T, and we're going to see if he can help us with that. Not sure if, and how that's going to go, but we're just reaching out to whoever we can to try to get that fixed.
Thank you, Rodney.
We'll keep on that. We haven't forgotten about it. Just want to let you know we hadn't forgotten about it. It's just one of those, one of those issues where one person says it might be the other person's property, so we don't know. It's kind of in a...
What's the liaison's name? Is it Robert something or other?
Duro.
Yeah.
Duro.
So, we'll, we'll see if we can get some help that way.
Okay.
And then I have a rec center report from the last... And then, um, I have a rec center report from the last construction meeting in November. The date remains February the eighth for now. They did not do an updated schedule because there's been some personnel changes, so, but right now it's, it's February the eighth. Some of the significant accomplishments over the last thirty days, I don't know when the last time any of you have been there, but the sheetrock is pretty much one hundred percent done throughout the facility. There's been interior painting done. There might be some areas that need more coats, but for the most part, most, most everything in there has a, has a coat of paint on it. Of course, the gym equipment's been put in, some more equipment. Uh, they're working on the elevator. Some of the things they're going to do over the next few, over the next month or so is install Torazo, uh, some casework and complete the painting. Uh, one of the holdups is getting the AC units running, HVACs running and getting it conditioned well enough where the flooring can be installed. My understanding is those HVAC units have to run for a few days or a couple of weeks, maybe, uh, before the wood flooring could be put in, because it's got to be acclimated to the, the conditions of the interior of the building. One thing that has happened with some of the staff changes and with the contractor maybe, um, trying to get some things moving because they are subject to liquidated damages now, five hundred dollars a day, they had, they did make a change in the painting contractor. From my understanding, they sent out some notices and, um, if the sub was not responsive, they replaced that sub. And so, the new painters gone in and, uh, gone right to painting some of the unpainted material. And they also recently, uh, did that with the grading contractor, and my understanding is they, um, they signed on a new grading contractor as of today. So, we may see some movement in some of the grading, um, here over the next few days. And, um, some landscaping, uh, work is being done over at the GPAC parking lot. Uh, you know, that's a separate contract outside of the scope of the rec center, but it's still, you know, waiting to be paved. We get into a timeline where there's going to be a cutoff for asphalt with the winter coming. So, um, with that project and with the road, uh, the road improvements on seventy and Montague, so we've reached out, staff reached out to DOT to discuss options in case we can't get that, that paving done, that asphalt work done before the cold weather sets in. So, um, I guess one theme is that staffing changes continue to play the contractor. We've seen, you know, a handful of different superintendents out there over the last few months. Uh, I think, I think we think the one that's out there now is kind of getting some things moving. The company VP has recently taken over and, uh, seems to be more motivated to finish the job, so that's kind of where we stand now.
Rodney, my birthday is February twenty-first. Do you think we could celebrate the finishing of the GPAC that day?
If we have a CO, we can have a birthday party inside the, inside the gym.
But if we don't get, uh, things ready, we can't put paved asphalt where the parking lot to park in. They're parking in the clay.
Yep, that is a concern.
So, can they make the improvements on seventy first? Or we making, or we want to get Montague Street improved before we do the, the turn, the turn lane and so forth on seventy, the improvements on seventy? And I know Tony has mentioned about that, he was hoping that was going to get on, get done, but that's-
Well, the, my take on it, the improvements on seventy need to be done first. You're working to a NCDOT constraint rather than a town. While we want quality paving no matter when it's done, um, when we're subject to someone else's guidelines, I mean, it's easier to control us. If I've got several days today, it's, what, sixty-eight degrees? If it quite, you know, the moisture was right in the grade, we can pave. Whereas going to the state where you're having to pause, ask a third party, so I, I would say we need to get the, the work done and NCDOT's right away first. And then the other stuff can start proceeding, but all of it goes, that, you can't do anything if you're not there. But, um, that's been expressed to them multiple times recently. Uh, there, there, there is movement with the landscaping and stuff, the, uh, things, and I do think the, the grading's probably going to start moving, but the paving's the biggest concern from a site development standpoint. And per Rodney's update, I, I think we're starting to see interior items. The biggest being the HVAC units, but inside the building is, is, it looks much different now, uh, so.
Tony's waving his hand.
Tony, um, we are certainly going to get into the season where we're going to have cold ground, frozen ground, and a lot of moisture, even in that top stone. Uh, and just because we might have two days that's nice temperatures, doesn't mean it's going to dry out the top, top two inches of that, uh, subgrade. How, uh, how tight are we on, or, or what kind of restrictions do we have on paving during the wintertime? Because they've been, they, they, they have those restrictions for a reason, and it's unfortunate that the contractor hadn't decided to pave until now. And I don't feel obligated to solve his problem in the middle of the winter.
Oh, absolutely. The, we would follow NCDOT guidelines with respect to paving. The state, it's on the harder deadlines within their spec books. It says from middle December to middle of March, unless you receive special permission, you can't pave on their encroachments. Within the, and we follow their guidelines, but, but daily you want it to be forty degrees and warming, uh, you know, so that, again, councilman, to your point, that you could still have some frozen stone, frozen subgrades, if you've had a cold night. So, all those are taken into account, uh, when we've done it. I mean, uh, with private work that's been done in the town over the years, I mean, I've seen times where they paved in January when the conditions were rotten.
Well, when you're resurfacing, maybe in January, but paving on, paving on stone and, and trying to get a tack coat to, uh-
The bride.
And, and break so it'll bind it, that's, that's very problematic and I hope, I hope we don't allow that. I just, we, we will, we will be repairing that for years to come.
And, and it is our concern, and obviously you can see, per your point, why it's NCDOT's concern, uh, within the seventy right away. And when it, when, when you get in advance to the point that we have the GPAC where the stone's on it, there we're just clearly waiting for the weather and, uh, but it does still rest, rest in the general contractor's court to make the needed remedial repairs. If the section's just a little too wet, we could take it out and get extra asphalt in it when the weather's conducive to it.
How do we look at the, uh, we've got about three things there. We've got the rec center itself and its immediate confines and, and parking areas. Got Montague Street, and then we've got the parking area. It's three different contracts, I think, maybe it's multiple contracts, but we've got three different specific project delineations. If they get, if they get the rec center and Montague Street, but not the parking lot, is the contract complete? Or what, are we going to run into issue, do you think we're going to run into issues there? And don't we need to say, get everything done? Because if you leave something undone, they could be another year getting it done, but no incentive.
The way the contract is structured, while they're broken out to part A, B, or C, would be the best way to describe it. It is one contract with one completion date. Now, um, again, to your point, the, the roadwork around the, the rec center, Montague Street, Purvis Street, Main Street, seventy, and the rec center building itself, I, I would say absolutely there's no discussion there, and there may not be any moving forward, just depending on where it stands and guidance would come from council. Where, I mean, the way the book, the, the way the spec book's written, if you're not complete, it's one contract. So, substantial completion would be the definition that we would be looking to and, and working there. Generally, it would probably tie with the building and the improvements with that, with the others being supplemental, but I don't, you know, there, there's still room for discussion within all that, uh, as far as liquidated damage.
I was really trying to send a signal when the contractor listens to this, is that there's little room for discussion, get it all done, sir. That's my position, but.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tony, I would say-
Yes, sir.
Well, this is a minor point, but maybe after we get through the holidays, Christmas holidays, or weather permitting, would be reasonable to take another little tour, maybe in early, mid-January, just to-
Absolutely. I mean, I would say anytime you want to stop by, if you check in at the construction trailer, they're more than willing for you to come.
Oh, okay.
And, and same thing between now and the holidays. If, if any council members have time, I'll be glad to meet over there, you know, call our office, they can find me. And so, any, at, at any point, or we could organize something for the, a larger group.
Thank you.
So, like Garrison's off the job, somebody else is coming on?
There was a letter to cure sent. Uh, I think it, it came Friday, I think it's seventy-two hours, so I think that they intend, if the conditions aren't met, to move a different contractor onto the site.
Rodney, anyone else?
No, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're just getting off, Rodney, Rodney, Rodney may not be finished.
Are you all right?
I'm, I'm good.
You got more, Buck?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, building downtown that's got the uncovered Coke, uh, the old Coke emblems and, and advertising. What's going to hap, have, do you know if there's a plan in place on what's going to happen with that building?
Yes, sir. Building plans are in staff review now, and we're working out some discrepancies between zoning, um, zoning conditions and proposed use, so we're actively working with the developer, um, as late as this afternoon.
Zoning conditions?
I'm sorry?
Zoning conditions?
Yes, sir. Just, everything has to go through zoning, zoning approval, and it's just, we're just trying to sync up, um, the, the intended use with the zoning that's appropriate, uh, the zoning that's in place in downtown.
Okey-dokey. Bill, we saw some, uh, emails about us having, the town having to report to the state about ordinances that we've adopted. Can you explain what it was that we were supposed to be doing?
Yes, sir.
Or it sounded like that, that was an indictment.
No, no, it's, it's, it's not, the town's order, it's every municipality and sanitary district and a bunch of other entities throughout the state, probably, probably five hundred entities. Uh, I do not know where this came from, um, except that it came out of the legislature. I mean, I don't know the, the origin of all this, but there are two different legislative study commissions that are, study committees that are apparently, um, uh, taking on the chore of trying to examine what laws municipalities and, and quasi municipality entities throughout the state, uh, have made declaring various things illegal. And, uh, basically, uh, every, I mean, the counties, county attorneys and county clerks and municipal attorneys and clerks have been sort of, uh, struggling through this process for the last, uh, last several weeks. And, um, basically what it demanded to was having to go through, uh, the town code and, um, go through the UDO and summarize and highlight in a report, um, to the legislative study committees, uh, a list and a description of everything that you can do in honor that's punishable as misdemeanor. And, uh, we, um, you know, the deadline was December one, uh, we emailed it off to them a day or two ahead of that, and, um, it's over with. Where it's going to go, how long it's going to take, who's going to read through all those hundreds and thousands of pages of stuff and how long it's going to take them to do it, I don't know. But it's just something we had to do.
Good, thank you.
And it's done.
That's good.
And somebody's going, somebody must have a bee in their bonnet somewhere that does, doesn't think that municipalities ought to make, uh, X a criminal offense. And if that's what it is, they'll pass a law saying you can't make X a criminal offense. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't know where all this is going to go, but I'll let you know when I, when I hear more about it.
So, somebody's reserved for the state to do that. Uh, that, that's fine, thank you. Rodney, your report on rec center was, uh, was about as much in depth as we've had in a while. Is it possible to, uh, put that in writing so we could all see it? That's, that was some good information, because you, you covered, uh, it, just put it in your main bullet points.
Okay, yeah, we'll get that for you, too.
Okay. Uh, tonight with the rezoning request on Maxwell Drive, I've kind of highlighted one thing that I, I don't want, I'm up here to make a, a big argument about it. But we go through a lot of rezoning things that, that apparently the planning thinks needs to come to us, which is fine, but instead of reading item by item by item on FEMA and water requirements and fire protection and just of those, is there any way that we can streamline it so that we could, could y'all just look into streamlining these things that, when it's pretty obvious that we can read them and you, you don't have to read everything? It, it'll just make things go a lot smoother and quicker. And we'll fill the time on something else, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Buck, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, talking about the, uh, the depot and the caboose, also over there is a, is a memorial, veterans memorial put there by the Garner VFW. And, uh, I think it's something we need, might need to consider, you know, it's a simple move for that would be to ride across the street to Senior Center, to park a lot there with a flagpole. You know, we get, if, if, I reckon we'd have to ask the VFW, but I'm, I'm sure town forces could pick that, that up and get that moved and, and put over there because there's a flagpole and that. And, uh, you know, we're going to talk about the caboose and, and the depot, then of course the memorial's got to move also. And it seemed like to me a reasonable place to put it would be over at the Senior Center to, uh, I think, I think in today's world, it's a big one about it, that, that the, the older generations, including myself, seem to be more, uh, appreciative of some of these veterans memorials. So, anyway, I was thinking-
Our groups had discussion about-
A few years ago.
Our groups recently had discussion about that. Um, well, the Garner Area Historic Society, Historical Society, I have to get that right, have had discussions about that and then internally, uh, with the possibility of moving, moving the memorial across the street to the Senior Center or Veterans Memorial at Lake Benson, one of the two places. And the, um, the Historical Society, uh, one of their requests is to potentially get the flagpole moved to the depot site on Pearl Street. So, those are some of the discussions we've had.
Okay. Well, the memorial would be appropriate over that at Senior Center, in that little island, the, the parking lot.
Senior Center already has a flagpole and-
Exactly.
Lake Benson already, so-
Exactly.
One use of the flagpole could be.
Got you. Excuse me, pardon me, I wanted to mention that when it came up, it had been on my mind for some time, but clicked for me to ask the question tonight. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Kathy.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, we had the Christmas Tour of Homes yesterday sponsored by the Women's Club and, uh, just got figures a little while ago that we've raised over two thousand dollars and still climbing, which is, we're real excited about that because the money, uh, is distributed in scholarships to, um, worthy and deserving students. So, a lot of good comments about that, so thank you all for your support. A question, this morning I was walking on Garner Road and a work truck parked on the sidewalk in front of, I think it's one oh-one East Garner Road, uh, the bank's house, old bank's house is parked on the sidewalk, and they had a, a big piece of equipment behind and another piece parked on the property. So, to get around them, you had to walk out in the road. Is that allowable, that a work truck parks on the sidewalk so that you can't pass? Does anybody know? It wasn't a town, it wasn't a town work truck, yeah?
Yeah, I, I came by that area during around lunchtime and, um, I noticed, I think someone's putting cabling in the ground.
Right.
And that was probably a treading machine or something, but, yeah, for a short period of time, they're probably allowed as far as our right of way, doing work in our right of way, but-
Well, they were there at eight-thirty this morning, and so if they went to noon, that's a pretty long time to block the sidewalk, so, um, there was that. And I also have to chuckle a little bit, yesterday morning I heard some very loud construction equipment around nine o'clock in the morning outside, and it was Sunday morning. But, uh, I rode down Creach Road and saw where they were working, and I'm not complaining at all. They were clearing some land that needed to be done a long time ago, so, uh, that was a good thing, even on Sunday morning. So, that's all.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I had the privilege of attending the North Carolina League Municipalities' Advocacy Goals Conference, along with the town manager, uh, and, uh, Mr. Bridges was there for a portion of that. As you probably know, um, they have committees that meet-
a portion of that. As you probably know, they have committees that meet, and they come up with the goals. There were thirty-three for the delegates to consider, and narrowed those down to ten. I don't have the final list of ten that the, that the delegates approved. I'll be happy to share those with this council. They may be available at our next meeting. But it was, was an interesting session. We had a chance to hear from the Treasury Secretary, I believe, and also Governor Cooper came over and shared some comments with us. So, anyway, it was a good, it was a good meeting. And the second thing I would mention is, I've heard the old saying that in spite of, I don't know what the adjective is, but the parade must go on. And so, on Saturday, in spite of some rain, the parade took place, and appeared that a lot of citizens turned out to be a part of that. So, it was a nice event in spite of the weather. Beyond that, I believe that's all I have for now.
You might have anything else?
For the statutes noted by the attorney.
The NCGS 14331811A3, consult with town attorney regarding prospective litigation, and NCGS 14331811A5, to discuss parameters of real estate transaction.
So moved.
Motion to go into regular session, go into closed session. Second?
Second.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, closed session.
Okay, we're back in open session. The council's been in closed session discussing the potential land acquisition. We took no action.
The motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Aye. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.